I'd like to call to order the regional city council meeting for Tuesday, April 8th, 2025. Our sort of business will be invocation by Reverend Annie Bell Noble of Spirit of Truth Church of Worship, 1731 Freeway Drive, Suite A, Reevesville.
Let's give honor to Mayor Gorham and the council and to all officials in the building. Let us pray. Almighty God, we come before you today seeking your guidance as we gather to address the challenges and opportunities facing our city. May wisdom and discernment be granted to each member of this council that they may rule with integrity and fairness in all their deliberations. May our discussions be marked by respect and understanding, and may we find common ground in our pursuit of the common good. We pray for the well-being of all residents of Reevesville, that our city may be a place of peace, prosperity, and justice. May your love and grace be with us as we work together to build a better future for our community. We ask this in the name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Y'all rise.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the highest law, with liberty and justice for all. Next, we have a recognition for Ms. Debbie White, City of Reevesville's 2024 Main Street champion. She raised herself thirty five years ago. Long time. I just had my boy Bill on the work. During this time, she has been a dedicated business owner and a former member of the RDC of Reevesville. She's also been a contributor of the success in Reevesville. Deborah's contributions extended to numerous downtown business events where she enthusiastically showed support and made elastic impact on the growth and the vitality of downtown. On behalf of the Reevesville City Council and the heartiest, I want to present you with... Do this.
We've got a round here. We've got Robert Young here. Maybe they'd like to sit here some time.
Robert's a little shy.
Debbie, I just want to thank you also on behalf of City Reevesville, RDC, for myself, Robert, Jason, and our team. I haven't gotten to know you too too long, but every single interaction I have to you right now, man. I truly feel blessed to know you are jammed to be able to happen downtown Reevesville. I already know you're an incredible woman, incredible business owner, and incredible community leader. You truly embody what it needs to be, why you can do this. I very thank you.
Thirty-five years. Very, very proud.
It can always be easy on the team.
Yeah. Well, do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I just want to say thank you so much for the honor.
Thank you for what you do here.
Thank you.
I'm one thirty-five more.
Congratulations.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda. We have four items. Is there any one item that anyone would like to have pulled for discussion? If not, I get a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
Okay. Second, we have a motion and a second is the end of discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All right, thank you. Next, we have a public hearing. Consideration of a text amendment to amend Article 5, Section 2, Tables of Permitted Uses and Notes to the Table of Permitted Uses, Article 5, Section 3, Special Uses and Article 5, Section 4, Table of Area Yard Height Requirements to Introduce a New Permit Use Single-Unit Attached Dwellings, Docket Number T 2025-01, Enclosure 1, Jason Hart.
And council and city manager, good evening. Playing staff is petitioning to amend several sections in the zoning ordinance pertaining to or currently referred to as townhomes and update terminology and some standards and change the permitted use title to single unit attached dwellings. The text amendment consists of six parts. We'll walk through each of them. Part 1 amends Article 5, Section 3, Special Uses of the Zoning Ordinance to Remove Special Use Permit Requirements for Townhomes, that's what they're currently called, that's required in residential agricultural 20, that's RA 20, residential 20, R 20, and residential single family 12, RS 12. Those, all zoning districts currently, townhomes are allowed with a special use permit in those districts. This means that anyone who applies to do those has to pay the fee for planning board. You all have a plaza, you do a hearing, you're all sworn in. You know, it's kind of like court. So that presents a pretty big impediment to a lot of developers who want to do townhomes in these different districts. Part 2 amends Article 2, Section 1, Definitions of the Zoning Ordinance to Remove Townhomes and Rename as Single-Unit Attached Dwellings. The definition is the same. We did not change it. I won't go through all that that's in your packet. It's pretty long, but there was no changes to the definition overall. Part 3 removes all mention of townhomes and townhouses that's a little inconsistent that are found throughout the zoning ordinance and replaces all of them with single unit attached dwellings. So that's, it's all throughout it. So that's all encompassing. Everywhere it says townhomes or townhouses, we will replace that with single unit attached dwellings. So that's just a blanket removal. Part 4 amends Article 5, Section 2, Table of Permitted Uses to Replace Dwellings Townhomes with Dwellings Single-Unit Attached. This is in the Table of Permitted Uses. Single unit attached dwellings are to be allowed by right in all residential zoning districts and the office and institutional districts. So we're removing that special use permit for the existing districts where it's allowed with discretionary approval, and we're actually expanding to the ONI district as well. We do allow single family detached dwellings in ONI, so it seems consistent to allow attached single family dwellings in ONI. So we are proposing that as well. Part 5 amends Article 5, Section 2, Notes to the Table of Permitted Uses. Note 25 to include the addition of unit density requirements for single unit attached dwellings in the various districts. This is the standards that apply to it. So the note that reflects back to the table, which gives you your standards for this. That's where your density and so forth is found. So currently, the reasonable zoning ordinance allows townhomes as a by right use in R 12 and R 6 and the TND zoning districts. As I mentioned before, they're allowed with a special use permit in the RA 20, R 20, and RS 12 districts. Special use permits, as I've talked about, require discretionary approval of certain land uses that are deemed compatible only in certain instances when they meet the standards that we put in the special use permit standards. That's what you all look at whenever you review a special use permit. So the proposed text amendment updates the ordinance's terminology for townhomes. As we don't really call them in land use regulation, townhomes anymore. We call them single unit attached dwellings in most modern development codes, is what you call them. That's what we were proposing for the UDO to call the use in that document. So repealing the special use permit requirement for single family attached dwellings in the lower, medium, below density districts and moving to a by right approval with development standards as we currently do in the medium and high density residential districts removes a barrier to housing development. So whenever you go to by right development with just administrative approval and remove that discretionary council approval, remove a barrier that people see when they think that, you know, it's kind of removes some uncertainty of that. So that's one of the reasons for it, is to, you know, promote housing. We do propose a gentle increase in the allowed density to six units per acre from the currently allowed 3.2 units an acre in the RA 20, R 20, and RS 12 districts. Going to six units an acre in RA 20 and R 20, and then RS 12 following the R 12 standards of 10.5 units an acre. So RS 12 and R 12 are both overall medium density districts. What we had looked at combining those in the UDO since they are characteristically medium density. So it makes sense that RS 12 would match R 12 medium district, medium density district standards. So the minimum lot size we're proposing for RA 20 and R 20 are proposed at 30,000 square feet for the first two units and 3,007.1 for each additional unit. This aligns with the density. So wherever you can build six units, that's your lot size. So it's compatible so that the density matches the lot size. That's technical, but it just matches up. For RS 12 and ONI, we're proposing to use the current standards for the R 12 district as I mentioned. So ONI will follow the medium density district standards as well, since we do allow some commercial uses in that, some light commercial uses, at least like offices and things. So just some context, no other jurisdiction in the triad region actually allows single family attached dwellings in their low density residential districts even by special use permit. We found this in our research. This changed to our zoning ordinance places the city of Reevesville at the forefront of encouraging housing affordability in the triad. The text amendment request is consistent with the reasonable land development plan under Goal 3, which is to expand housing. There's a considerable need for housing in Reevesville as noted in the land use plan adopted by council. This amendment aligns with Goal Number 3 by removing regulatory barriers to affordable housing in development regulation and assistance in addressing the need for more varied housing stock. By allowing single unit attached dwellings as a by right use in all residential districts, we are able to ensure an expanded housing stock that is accessible to people of all income levels and that is attractive to both developers and to residents. The planning staff recommended approval of the proposed text amendment, and the planning board unanimously recommended that the proposed text amendment be approved. And I will be happy to answer any questions.
The question is of Jason. Hey, thank you, Jason.
Thank you.
We'll open the public hearing at 6:14. We have anyone who'd like to speak for the text amendment? Seeing none, do we have anyone who'd like to speak against the text amendment? We'll close the public hearing at 6:15. What is the favor of council?
I got a couple of comments that I want to make on this.
Okay.
To be transparent and clear, and as part of this is for Bill McLeod as well. So I specifically requested this because as I was doing some research for a particular project here in the city of Reevesville, one of the things that I noticed in terms of the special use permitting process was that you would go through the entire process, but to get the special use through the planning board, however, you had to spend the money and hire an attorney, write an HOA, and run through all these different protocols so to say that you would do once a project is completed. And I don't remember all the rules. Maybe Jason could speak on it. And so one of the comments that I came back when speaking with planning staff was no developer is going to, is going to create an HOA and put it in working order, not knowing whether or not they can build these townhomes or not. So that was the part that I ran into that I saw as an obstacle that personally affected me in my project that I'm working on. So once I was speaking with Jason, he said it was in the documents to change in the upcoming events. And I said, well, you know, I feel that this would stunt a lot of, or slow down a lot of growth in Reevesville. And when people look and want to develop or build townhomes and see that you could spend upwards of $50,000 to $75,000 before you even know if you can build the townhome to go through the special use permit. And I said, you know, I would like to make a request that this go through planning board and the council. So for that reason, I'm not sure if I should recuse myself from voting on this.
It sounds, it sounds to me that you've got an interest in this.
Yes.
That would, could affect you financially. Kind of carry your interest in the matter, so.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
Their motion.
I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion that to recommend the proposed text amendment T 2025-01 be approved.
Okay, do we have a second? Seconded motion. Okay, end of discussion. There's no problem with this vote because we got enough people here in reference to presence for quorum, right? Okay, all right. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Willie.
And I just want to make one more comment in terms of creating clarity here. The biggest thing that changes in this text amendment is the fact that you would not be creating HOAs and then coming and asking to build a townhome complex. You'd be, if that was the case, you'd be putting the cart before the horse. And so that was the purpose in me asking for the change in this is because it didn't make sense to hire an attorney, create HOAs, and do all these things, and then come say, can I build these townhomes? You would want to know if you could build them before you would spend the money, you know, going to create an HOA, just so the public and everybody understands, you know.
Next item on the agenda, consideration of ordinance amendment or amended to meet Senate Bill 300 requirements. This is the second reading, so we'll be voting this time. Chief Gibson.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Porter Tim, council members, City Manager Moore, thank y'all. Like the mayor just said, this will be the second read, and as you well know from the last council meeting, we discussed two ordinance, 1141 permit required in 11, excuse me, 1775 parking in Central District limited. So this is the second reading on that. Also, during our research, Clark found that two sections, A and B of 1775 were way out of doubt, outdated, and needed to be repealed, and that's included in this amendment as well. So any questions?
No.
They don't want to have any questions.
No questions, and I would suggest a motion to approve amendments to Section 1141 and Section 1775 of the city's codes of ordinances.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the amendments to Section 1141 and Section 1775 of the city codes of ordinances.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, end of discussion. All those in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you all.
Next item, consideration of ordinance amending Chapter 10 Municipal Utilities and Services, Section 10-122, receptacles and containers required, Section 10-123, same to meet standards, and Section 10-127, large trash pickup enclosure 3, Josh Beck.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, City Manager. We talked a little bit about this. It's hard to believe it's already April, but so this, these ordinance changes are really wanting to address two things. Sections 10122 and 10123 are actually wanting to address the same thing, but in residential and commercial. Our ordinance right now specifically says that, Councilmember Coates, because you have a downtown business, I can't sell you a city of Reevesville trash can. Same with Ms. Barbara there. So I don't know the reason why that was written that way, truthfully, but we have unfortunately some issues where trash cans are stolen downtown. We've received numerous complaints, tried to work with Chief Gibson on that. And of course, we sell them at cost, so there's really no disadvantage, if you will, to allowing those businesses to buy them from us. You know, they pay the same fee whether they go and buy one for, I think, about $90 at Walmart, the brute containers that you can buy there. And so as part of this, we wanted to recommend those revisions. The good thing about the trash cans that we do provide, as you will notice at your home, is that it has a serial number, right? And that's unique. So a lot of times when a trash can goes missing, one of the many things my superintendent and supervisor does is on trash day and all the trash cans are out, they'll comb the streets and look for that particular serial number that's registered to your trash can to help relocate it back to your house. So we see this as a benefit. Again, we charge the customer at cost. Our cost is roughly $65 and some change, so we're all actually saving, you know, both residential and commercial customers $25, $30, depending on the can. And so that's, again, that's Section 10122 and 10123. And then the other section that we would like to address tonight is 10-127, and that's the bigger one that we wanted to come forward tonight. So when we did the revisions back in October of 23, we forded trash bulk collection from commercial properties that have a large dumpster. If you're paying for a trash service with a large provider, waste industries, GFL, foothills, we felt that your bulk items should also go in that facility as well for pickup. And for the most part, all of the businesses have been doing that, but there are a select few, unfortunately, that have continued to cause issues with us. And the policy right now states that if Councilmember Coates puts a bunch out, we've got to notify him via letter. We have to wait 14 days. He does it again next month, we do the same thing. We have to notify him, give him the 14 days, and then clean it up. What we're doing in Section 10-127 is we're going to do that the first time. We still feel that's necessary. The very first time you come to the city, maybe you just bought felts printing, for example, and you didn't know, and you throw out a bunch of material. We want to give you the opportunity to learn the ordinance and be advised by our staff and then hopefully move about it the right process forward. But this particular ordinance will, on the second offense, will eliminate the 14-day notice. So once we've told you and we see you do it again, then we're going to charge you a $40 administration fee and then a $15 per cubic yard disposal fee for the excess. And we'll eliminate that waiting period that I know many of you have brought forth. I know City Manager Moore has brought forth numerous occasions to me, and unfortunately, it's the same six or seven. So we have tried to go the process. We have notified them. My superintendent knows all the managers of these apartments by name at this point, honestly, and he can tell you the maintenance guys that he talks to. But yeah, we, we think these changes are necessary to eliminate this so we don't have a bunch of trash sitting out there for weeks on end that, per the ordinance, staff can't pick up until that timeframe. So I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. And then there is a motion at the end of my memo if you guys approve.
Have a question, please.
Yes, ma'am. Scared me. I didn't see you up there for a minute.
It states that a $40 per occurrence will be set, but then it says the fee will only apply annually. Which is which? I didn't understand that.
So it's a $40 per situation plus the extra $15 per yardage that we collect. You know, now, truthfully, we're only going to do that on a weekly basis. So, you know, we maintain our routes. So if your route is on Tuesdays and you have it out there, we're going to charge that fee and of course the trash yardage fee. We're not going to come back on Thursday and do it again. We don't have that flexibility in our route. So it, it will be a $40 fee per occurrence.
Okay, but I didn't understand what it meant by apply annually.
So this fee will only apply annually after the first incident. It's almost reading as if you only charge the $40 one time for the year, and then after that it'd be 15 bucks per cubic yard after your occurrence, is I think that's what she's thinking.
I think what we're, the way I read it is the one-time notice is the first time we tell you about it.
So is there a fee with that first notice?
No, no, we don't charge a fee for the first notice. We give you the 14 days. The only one we collect.
Okay, I still don't understand. It says per occurrence, and then it says annually, so I didn't understand what was what.
Where's the annual?
First page, just strike, this fee will apply annually after the first incident, the very first page. Yes, memorandum.
I grabbed for last.
Oh, so, so the memo is referring to the, the callback as well that we discussed. So just as a reference to you guys, that's the, that's the callback or return trip fee. We only charge that after the first incident. That's a separate situation. That's, that code is already in the ordinance, and we talked about that as well at our retreat. But that is the call, the, the return procedure. Say Ms. Water forgets to put her trash out, the first time we will forgive her, but the next time there's a $40 return trip fee for when her trash is not out in a timely manner.
So Mr. Beck, I think the only thing we need to strike through is says at that bottom one, just strike through, this fee will only apply after the first incident. And so I think annually, which, trip, and that's about it. I think just according to your memo, you just put this fee will only apply after the first incident. I think that cleans it up.
You just strike an annual, annually out of there.
Yes, thank you very much.
But to be clear, Councilmembers, that's our return trip fee. That's a different...
Okay, I still don't understand. It says per occurrence and then it says annually, so I didn't understand what was what.
Where's the annual?
First page, just strike thi- this fee will apply annually after the first incident, the very first page. Yes, memorandum.
I grabbed four last.
Oh, so so the memo um is referring to the uh the callback as well that we discussed. So just as a reference to you guys, that's the re- that's the callback or return trip fee. We only charge that after the first incident. That's a separate situation. That's that code is already in the ordinance, and we talked about that as well at at uh our retreat. But that is the call, the the return procedure. Uh say Ms. Water forgets to put her trash out, the first time we will forgive her, but the next time there's a forty-dollar return trip fee for when her trash is not out in a timely manner.
So Mr. Beck, I think the only thing we need to strike through is says at that bottom one, just strike through this fee will only apply after the first incident. And so I think annually switch. Trip in everybody, and that's about it.
I think you just according to your memo, you just put this fee will only apply after the first incident. I think that cleans it up.
You just strike an annual, annually out of there.
Yes, thank you very much.
But to be clear, uh Councilmembers, that's our return trip fee. That's a different, just a reminder to you guys that that was in the ordinance. Now that we have cameras on both of our one-armed bandit trucks, we will start implementing that as needed.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to say thank you um for your quick response on this. I know I brought this to the manager's attention, and we had a couple of meetings on it. Um more or less, your complex, your apartment complexes was some of the issues like you just mentioned, and uh and I think hopefully, knock on wood, this will solve it. Um but it was getting a little out of control for for the public to know. It's been eyesore, um you know, myself seeing it and and getting citizens complaining about it. Uh so I really, I really appreciate y'all's hard work on it and moving as quick as you did on it. Um and so I I think we'll uh hopefully this will solve. We'll see. I think I think it's a start.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, what's the favor of council?
I'd like to make a motion to file a regional city order. Chapter ten municipal utilities and services, section ten dash one twenty-two, section ten dash one twenty-three, and section ten dash one twenty-seven is outlining the attached ordinance attachments.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Next, we have consideration of entry fee for city splash pad enclosure four. Hey, with Cloud Junior, City Manager of Community Services.
He said city? Assistant, I'm assistant. Appreciate the honor.
Okay, I gave you a promotion, didn't I?
Appreciate it.
Assistant City Manager.
Uh good evening, uh Mr. Mayor, City Council, Madam Manager, citizens. Uh I'm before you from for item, what's that, eight A? Um this conversation about the uh entry fee for the splash pad we had at your February retreat. Um and you tasked us with going back and giving you all some options. You all discussed it, and so um now we're here of basically for you all to have that conversation about whether or not you want to uh for the second year, start of the second year, to charge a an entry fee, and we provided some options there. For those who were here on this board when this whole project came about, if y'all recall, you had a conversation about the first year, we let it be free, but we'll come back and talk about the second year to see how things went and to see what you all want to do. Also, at the uh retreat, we talked about cost recovery, uh which is um for those who may not understand, to provide certain services, it costs. So the recovery is the money you get that you bring in uh compared to what you spend. So for just a basic math, for every dollar you spend, if you got twenty-five cent back, then that's a twenty-five percent cost recovery. So we had those conversations, and then we got to talking about the the splash pad. And so um here we are today, uh for you all to have that conversation as we enter into the second year coming up Memorial Weekend. So staff is here to um to present this and for you all to have those discussions.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. If I may interject one thing, too. One reason we did, you know, as we talked to you each at the retreat is, you know, with any new project, you have a one-year warranty period. So with that, you know, we're able to cover the cost the first year because if something did break down with the machinery or anything, that was covered in our one-year warranty period. Now, you know, in a couple of months, we will have exceeded that one-year warranty period as we move forward. If something were to happen to any of the equipment, the city would then have to pay for that equipment. So that was just another thing we wanted to be mindful of as we talked with you at your retreat, um as we're looking into this budget year. I think that um Mr. Cloud has done a great job providing you all some options. Option A was one dollar per person. Option B was two dollars per person. I believe that's the same as the Freedom Park in Eden um that they researched, and then option C was three dollars per person, which is the same in Raleigh. So those are just three options for you to consider uh based on our discussions at the retreat.
That's accurate. One one question I had, um I know this is about just the entry, individual entry, and you have additional fees that we can collect on the rental uh for birthday parties or whatnot. The other thing was, and I didn't see it in here, did y'all discuss or anything about passes? Would it be more, you know, think a package type deal or a family pass? I didn't know if y'all had brought that up, or if that's something y'all could just bring up later.
Yeah, we had this, we were waiting to hear from you all about, you know, whether or not we were going to charge anything. Excuse me, and then we're going to start looking at what what we talked about about different specials or passes that we could possibly, and then we'll bring that back to you. But to answer your question, no, we didn't have that conversation because we were waiting for you all to give us some direction as to what we were going to do.
If we could put that in our annual fee schedule that we can talk to you each about at your budget retreat session, we just wanted some direction. If you kind of picked a number that helps us kind of balance what the pass cost could be.
Got you. So picking this number, this would be what we would start charging now, though, correct?
But when it opens.
When it opens, open in Memorial.
Did we, one one of the things that 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 I would like to know uh is to, what is the um head count daily and the weekend count there, you know? Do we know that?
Of what we what we did last year?
Yes. Or and and overall, do we know what our overall attendance was? Was there any way we tracked that?
We did.
I tell you why I'm asking that. I think in the retreat, we had some conversations about hardships of families and finances and the rising cost of 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 um utilities and these different things and alienating certain families from from uh attendance and being able to utilize this. And so I was leaning towards myself, the dollar per person. Uh I know for a long time, the splash pad in Eden was only a dollar, and then at some point in time, they increased their rates. And and I'm not for the taxpayers providing this. I think we need to recoup some type of cost, but I personally myself would like to make a sound judgment in that dollar because with two dollars per person, you got an average family, you know, of five, you know, that ten dollars may only allow that child to visit one time this month, you know, payday, you 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 know, versus that versus that. Uh so I would like to really kind of have a a cost analysis of what is that daily cost to operate? You know how you talked about the one dollar and we recouped in twenty-five cent? Like if we knew what that cost was and what the intake is, you know, to to make that? Or if say if we did go with something like option B and we wanted to be in tune with freedom, I definitely don't want to be as the same in Raleigh because we don't have the same clientele as Raleigh has, the same financial status as them, so to say, as a whole. Uh for me to make a choice on this, I think there's some unanswered financial questions.
But to answer that question, we did about a hundred and twenty-five people a day last year. That's what we averaged last year.
Do we know what we think the daily operational cost is?
Well, again, as some as uh um Manager Moore said, some of those O O and M, those operation and maintenance costs, we don't, but we do have the numbers for what we have for part-time salaries. Uh we knew what we spent on concessions. Those are the only two things that we can tie down as what we we had about uh nineteen thousand, almost twenty thousand in salary dollars, and we spent close to three thousand in concession, in concession dollars. Those are the only two things that
What did we make off of concession? Are you saying we made three thousand?
No, we we spent twenty-six, twenty-six hundred, and we made about almost a thou- almost uh ten thousand dollars.
Made ten thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
We did well on concessions. Um but again, those other costs, we had a few things to break down in the first year, but again, we were under that year warranty, so I'm not sure about operational. We'll be able to get that as
Did we rent any of that? Did we do?
Yeah, we we made thirty-four hundred dollars in rentals last year, too.
Would have made ten in concession, roughly, roughly uh three, just say, call it three thousand in rentals, about thirteen grand, and we spent nineteen thousand in labor. So that would put us, that would put us at about a six thousand dollar loss, not counting any
Any maintenance.
Right.
Or electrical.
So if we were charging a dollar a person, you said a hundred and twenty-five a day?
Yeah, average about a hundred and twenty-five a day.
Total, even through the week and everything, so roughly
Hundred and twenty-five, that's that was the average, a hundred and twenty-five a day.
So we could say eight hundred bucks a week, thousand dollars a week, roughly, income coming in. And how many weeks is this open?
Uh Memorial Day until Labor Day.
Yeah.
So something for council to think about, maybe a option D, just throwing it out there, if you wanted to establish a rate, like a mixture of option B, two dollars per person, but maybe there's one day in the week it's free still.
Yeah.
Have a free day.
Have a free day to where you could accommodate. You're still getting, recouping any of those maintenance costs, but if you had that family that you just could not, you know, because it is difficult for everyone, they could try and look at that date to come because it would be a free day.
Good idea. Yeah, got you.
And I would suggest that like during the week, like a free weekday, um and then we could evaluate it as we go into next year. So it kind of gives you a hybrid model to see what we need to look at as we go through the second year of the splash pad and see if this is the middle ground.
Okay. Yeah.
I like that.
You know, I guess it was a good idea.
Yeah. So
Manager came up with that idea.
Yes, she did.
I'm not sure if anybody else has any questions, but if we could add option D to this, at least for me, because that would be the part that I would lean into. And then we always have every year annually, as we've discussed, to to reevaluate, get a little bit of community feedback. Um I know the perception of the community originally, uh myself included, when this was built, I you know, we could hash that out, the perception and it being free was not uh widely accepted. But I think when you look at the different things and the hardships, if we're not, I don't care for, I don't want to make money, but uh and I want to be able to allow the children to go, and then I don't want out-of-town people coming here for free, you know, as well, because they're not going to take care of our stuff like we would, I hope, you know, take advantage of it.
So Mayor Council, we can do in preparation for your budget meeting in a couple of weeks, if there is um a consensus or a motion to go with an option D, which is a hybrid approach to charge two dollars per person with one with a weekday free, and we can get with our Parks Director to see which day that might be best. We can bring that information back along with pricing now that we would know what you're looking at for your passes. We can provide that um
Family pass.
Family passes. I would suggest on the family passes, that is something that maybe you look at an inside rate and an outside rate. I saw that done. I think that would be a great way to to help there, and then we can also bring you back uh the financial documents as well to look at that we talked about.
Well, I mean, he kind of answered for me. You're more welcome, Brick, but I wanted to try to just crush the quick numbers. I I would like to make an option D hybrid motion, you know, two dollars one day, week free, you know, and then we come back, you know, like she said, with the
Passes for family.
Yeah. And creating that for the city residents, you get a family pass, it would be just a slight savings, you know, potentially blow, some may, you know, maybe something like that. So I would make a motion, you know, for that option.
Do we have a motion for option D?
I second that motion.
Okay.
I think it's a good, it's a good thing. Good option.
With the opportunity to come back and add the family passes and things like that, and also the date of the week that we would choose to.
I will say that I'm impressed by the profits from the concession as well as the birthday parties, and eventually if this thing comes, it may it may come to where this you could drop back down to a dollar because you could start building a surplus, you know?
Yeah, I'm anticipating when more people hear about the private parties, that we'll make, that I think it'll be rented a whole lot more this year. That's what I'm anticipating. I don't know, I can't predict the future, but that's what I'm anticipating.
Sounds like it.
We got a motion and a second, and we've had discussion. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Next item, consideration of the purchase of of bandit refuse truck and related financing plan, including budget ordinance amendment number thirteen enclosure five, Assistant City Manager, Chris Phillips.
Mr. Mayor, Council, um back during the last year's budget process, uh doesn't seem like it's been that long ago since we're in the middle of it again, but um one of the capital request was a uh one-armed bandit. Uh we used to call them garbage trucks, now they're refuse trucks, but um this is a garbage truck. So um that um was in their request. We talked about that we probably would finance that since it is a large purchase uh at four hundred and twenty-one thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Uh the other thing is there's an eighteen-month lead time on a garbage truck. So again, we discussed this last year, now's the time to actually order it. Um if we order it now, if uh if you do make the motion to do this tonight, if we order it, it'll be here in the fall of twenty twenty-six, so eighteen months from now, which would put us in the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year. Um in that year, some existing debt will be um over, so we'll have some funds to actually pay for this loan that we could use uh towards this loan. So um
What we're asking about is
is actually for you all to approve of a um budget ordinance amendment that will uh put the funding in place to purchase the truck and the financing, and allow staff to order it. Um obviously, we don't pay for the truck until it comes in eighteen months. We wouldn't get the financing until closer to the time for the truck to come because uh we we most likely will use a bank and they wouldn't finance it uh this early out. So and we'll bring the debt back to you at the time um as well. This just sets up the budget to be able to go ahead and get the ball rolling on it. And uh just one other note, the the pricing for this truck, the four hundred and twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars, uh it was derived through state contracts, so uh that is state contract price for for a refuse, one-armed bandit refuse truck.
Any questions? I had to go to Google and to see what kind of truck that was. I'd never heard it called that. But I recognized it right away. Is there a motion for the one-armed bandit?
Motion, make a motion for the one-armed bandit garbage truck.
Is that good enough?
For the purchase of the one-armed bandit truck. And the approval of the budget ordinance amendment.
Okay.
Prepared.
Just one in there, yeah. All right, we got a motion. Is that a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on the one-armed bandit? See, none of those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Next item, consideration of agreement uh scoping document with City's Work enclosure six, Manager Moore, almost said word.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So Councilmember Martin and Councilmember Harrison, I met with this company at the National League of Cities Conference in Tampa, Florida back in November of twenty twenty-four. Their services are at no charge as they're a nonprofit organization. City Works would work with Reedsville to address and reform the regulatory barriers small businesses may be facing and make reforms to strengthen and increase accessibility of entrepreneurial sphere in the city. The attached scoping document allows for City Works to review the city's pending unified development ordinance or UDO language and accompanying analysis. The review will include identification of potential increases and regulatory burdens on small or new businesses, as well as opportunities for improved licensing and permitting streamlining based on best practices from other cities across across the country and Reedsville's economic growth goals. Following a view of the UDO, City Works would provide with in-depth regulatory research about the licensing and permitting process in Reedsville, gathering entrepreneur and community member insights, customizing reform packages, monitoring results, and sharing our findings with the public in a transparent and accessible manner. If this is something the city council and mayor would be interested in approving, then the suggested motion would be approve scoping document between the city of Reedsville and City Works.
Any questions of the manager?
I I think I'd just like to say, I think this is a great idea, and we should really take advantage of it. Yeah, I, I would second, second that as, as, uh, I had mentioned this to, uh, city, uh, managers, um, what are, well, more. Second, um, one of, one of the things that, that I feel that we need to do, and there was comments made not too long ago from a particular individual in here, that, uh, we want to provide obstacles to stop businesses from coming here. And when in fact, that is the direct opposite of this and the pur- purpose of this, a, a review of this would have caught something such as the HOA administrator, you know, providing that prior to, which is why I recommended and had her, we went and listened to them, to go back through the U D O and to make sure that we're cutting the barriers and cutting the red tape out and allowing Reedsville to organically grow and allowing us to grow like we should be and help give us some new insight and guidance of as, you know, staff works here, they don't always get to see what everybody else is doing. So staff's not going to know and understand how other communities are growing and what are they doing to create the growth. And a lot of that has to do with what is going on in particular areas, but there are also things that as the city that we could do to create growth as well and development that will help spark that. And I, so I think this is a big deal, and it's something that we really need and will be very useful.
And just add one more thing that, uh, Councilmember Martin had brought up. In speaking with this company, they gave, gave us a great example of a town in Texas that had tried to mimic another town. And what they didn't realize is when that town was trying to mimic like their U D O and other processes was, that other town was actually trying to stop growth because they were growing faster than their infrastructure was. So I think that was a good tool for us to think, too, you know, you shouldn't always just copy what another municipality or county is doing. You need to look at your organic growth that's happening within your communities and try and make sure we're being, um, business friendly when we're looking at that because Reedsville's looking to grow.
Yeah. And just to kind of give you an idea, like you have certain communities even here in North Carolina that will charge fees just for you to come in to build. Uh, one of the things that was in our U D O, which, you know, we had met and talked about in some of the council meetings, was providing a portion of your land for industrial growth, for greenway space and all these things. So a lot of those communities that are out growing, are growing at a rapid pace, are doing that to slow some of the growth down. But we, if we do that, because we're not Charlotte, or we're not Concord, or we're not Raleigh yet, those people aren't going to come in here and pay those fees because the return on their investment is not the same here as it would be in Raleigh. You know, example, square footage space for warehousing, we may get seven dollars here, Greensboro's getting twenty-eight dollars. So you don't mind paying a hundred thousand dollars to Greensboro extra because the cost of building, a building costs the same here as it does in Greensboro. The contractor is going to charge the same, material's the same. There's one difference, land cost. So if you're going to pay a premium for land cost and a premium to, to do business inside of that municipality, you're going to go work where you can get twenty-eight dollars a square foot for your building, not seven dollars. So that's what, what she was speaking of in terms of this. And that's what this company would do. We'll come in and make sure we're not doing things like that. And that's going to create growth. And then a few years down the road, hopefully, we'll be getting twenty-eight dollars a square foot for a building, not seven.
Any other discussion? We have a motion.
May I make the motion that we approve, open document between the city of Reedsville and City Works?
And we have a motion, and we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Next item, discussion on suggested rules and procedures for city council with adoption at May meeting, enclosure seven. Manager Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So just want to briefly go over, this was something that we had talked about at our retreat. Um, currently, the city council does not have your own rules or procedure. So this was a suggestion for, um, one of the topics to cover for this year. And some of the notes, all we're really wanting is just looking, asking for you to review these tonight. We'll bring this back at your main meeting. Um, if you've got any questions or want to make adjustments, please let Ms. Stabler I know, and we can bring that, um, back to you in May. But just some of the highlights, um, in the document is rule one talks about regular meetings, rule five, public address to the council, rule six, order of business, rule eight, office of the mayor pro tem, rule nine, action by council, rule fourteen, voting by written ballot, that's something that we discussed, rule seventeen, procedural motions, and rule twenty-five, a quorum. So if you'll just look over these between now and your next council meeting, if you have any suggestions or have concerns with any of those, these were items we discussed again at the retreat. Um, but we would be looking for adoption of this at your main meeting with the understanding this, this would be effective July first. That gives, um, the city clerk and I time to kind of roll this out to the public, working Granicus, which is our agenda software packet, to get these changes rolled out because your agenda will look slightly different in the order in which it will be looked at. Um, one of the biggest ones is public comment. Uh, currently, the way your agenda is set up, public comments at the very end. Uh, sometimes that's very confusing. That's, uh, puts a lot of strain on your citizens to sit through a meeting that long. So one of the things that we suggested in the retreat was you move public comment almost at the very beginning. Um, so that way you, as council, have an opportunity to hear from your constituents before you are forced to start voting on items. Uh, so those are just some things that we had discussed at the retreat. But again, not looking for a motion or anything tonight, just for your consideration to look over this between now and your main meeting.
Thank you. Next item will be public comments. Anyone who'd like to speak before council on tonight? Okay. Seeing no one. Boarding commission appointments. All right, let's move on to city managers' report.
Um, so just a couple of items. The first, I just want to, um, acknowledge an employee, Mr. Danny Yant. Um, his last day of service with the city was the end of March. Um, he was with the city for thirty-seven years. He was in our public works department, but Danny did a much more than just public works. Um, he always went above and beyond. He was willing to jump in and help in any department. So just want to wish him all the best on his well-deserved retirement. Couple of upcoming council, uh, meetings, just in events to make you aware of, our fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget work session will be Tuesday, April twenty-second at five thirty P M. at the Carriage House. I think that gives, uh, council and the public more room as opposed to here in chambers. So we will have that coming up. Also, the N C L M, North Carolina League of Municipalities City Vision Conference is April twenty-ninth through May the first. It's in Greenville, North Carolina. And then also just a slight change to the budget work session. The second budget work session will be fiscal year, um, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget will be Monday, May the nineteenth at five thirty P M. in the Carriage House. In your budget calendar, I think it originally stated it was going to be Tuesday, May the twentieth, but the Carriage House is booked that day. So just a slight modification there. Um, a couple of things of projects I just really wanted to highlight. Um, I would encourage all our visitors and our residents and city council, if you've not been out, go take a look at Lake Reedsville and all the improvements that the public work staff and Parks and Rec has done to that facility. Um, it is amazing, and I appreciate Mayor Gorham and city council seeing the need and the vision to improve Lake Reedsville. And we're really excited to see what's next as we go into the next phase of this project. But, um, all the camping sites are now concrete slabs. Um, you will eventually also have a completed paved loop around the campground. Um, currently, it's gravel. So just go out there and take a look. And that's really impressive to know that we're able to do that with internal staff because that just speaks volumes of their expertise. And a lot of municipalities don't have that expertise. So just thank you, and I'd encourage everyone to go look at that. Couple other updates, the Pet Rainbow Bridge. Aiden Blackwell has started work on the Rainbow Bridge at Lake Reedsville, and he's ordered his supplies. The goal is to have this finished by May the first. Um, do you want to get with the chamber at some point and set up a ribbon cutting? Just trying to see exactly when he thinks he may be finished. Also, our Revitalized Reedsville Committee, um, at a special call meeting on Tuesday, March the eighteenth, city council established a committee to meet with downtown property and business owners to discuss the city of Reedsville's intent to establish a vacant building policy and to better understand what property owners plan to do with their buildings that are vacant downtown. This committee will be led by Lanice Lane, who is the owner of Small Town Soul, and she also conducted the city of Reedsville's downtown building inventors, inventory study. Other members of the committee are elected officials and city staff, Mayor Gorham, Councilmember Shannon Coats, Fire Chief Josh Farmer, Montana Brown, Chase Lemons, and I will also be members of the Revitalized Reedsville Committee meeting. Also, our Unified Development Ordinance. City staff's been working with our consultant, Chad Meadows, with Code Right Consulting, along with the Reedsville Chamber of Commerce, to set up a public forum format to discuss the U D O. We're currently looking at dates in August or September for this public forum. We believe these months may be best, given that a lot of people travel during the summer months, and we want to ensure people are able to attend. Also, Mr. Meadows will be reaching out to additional community stakeholders to get their feedback regarding the U D O. Couple other announcement, Fab Festival. Montana Brown put together an employee-led committee to plan the Fab Festival on October eighteenth from eleven A M. to seven P M. We're currently working on sponsorship forums, vendor applications, and entertainment. Chairman of the board is the concert for the evening. However, there will be various forms of entertainment throughout the day. I know that, um, several members of our staff, along with Councilmember Coats, were able to meet with toy makers and other vendors to see if they would be able to participate in this year's Fab Festival. So we're excited to see where this can land. And then lastly, um, I did say I would give monthly updates on this particular, um, building. One oh five Gilmer Street update, the contractor called in for an inspection and has yet to complete the stucco work on the exterior, but the interior of the facade is complete and passed inspection. So I'll continue to give you updates as we move through that. Mayor and Council, that completes my report for this month.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember reports, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mayor. I've only got a couple of things. Uh, on March the eighteenth, I attended a special city council, uh, meeting with five members of the city council. Also on March the eighteenth, I attended the YMCA board and directors meeting. And on March the thirty-first, I attended the community meeting, which is sponsored by the regional police department. Had quite a few officers there. The attendance was pretty good. It was held at Zion Baptist Church, and I just want to compliment the members of the police department that were there. They did a really good job of presenting yourself and presenting, you know, the information to this, to our citizens. That's basically.
Councilman Coats?
The only thing I was able to attend on the twenty-seventh was the city battle for the cup and was a judge in one contest and a, I don't know what the.
A referee.
Referee.
Yeah.
Sir, police thing or something in that one. So, um, but I think, uh, see how retained the cup, is that right?
Yeah, we got the cup.
People yelling, cheating.
Back to back.
Yeah. That's fair. But that was the only thing I was able to attend this past month.
Not trying to show off on the fire department or the police department. It is back to back though. Okay, uh, Councilmember Martin.
So I want to forego my report, but I have some things that I want to address with the, uh, community, as well as some things that took place at the last council meeting in March the eleventh. Uh, during March the eleventh council meeting, we had the, um, board president of Lucky City, as well as, uh, a future business owner, um, Perry Savis for Dirty Laundry to attend. There were some comments and concerns addressed to the city in that council, as well as after that meeting follow-up. Lucky City does a weekly report. They sent this weekly report out, as well as they include in the city. So I want to highlight a few things that he, that he said that made accusations towards staff as well as council and make a correction on these. And I think it's important that the, uh, citizens know the direction that the city is headed in, as well as the changes that have been made at the city, at least since my time on council board, as well as Shannon's. And we've made a lot to cut red tape and do these things, which is part of the piece that the city manager spoke about, allowing the company to come in. So at that time, the, the two gentlemen made requests for social districts in the city of Reedsville and demanded that the social districts be voted on and passed that particular night and that without that Lucky City would fail. Well, a comment, I made a statement that there are no other restaurants nor bars or anywhere for a social district to happen. So at that point in time, if they failed, it's not on the city staff. The city has went above and beyond to assist Lucky City. They were cosigners on a note prior to my time on this board, as well as Lucky City has received funding from a USDA grant program that the city has to help them try to operate, that loans money at a quarter percent interest rate. So, uh, up to fifteen thousand dollars. They have borrowed that money to try to keep the doors open. And at this point in time, and are currently still only making a interest-only payment. So I would say a loan of roughly fifteen thousand dollars at a quarter percent interest probably equates to about a five dollar a month payment. So I do believe that the city as a whole has done everything they could to assist Lucky City. Glory. Uh, there were comments made in the email that he sent out that we were anti-growth and that the, uh, past of the city was the city staff were against growth, council wanted growth, and that role had reversed. When that's quite the opposite, I think council as a whole and in our work for the U D O and the redoing of the U D O and bringing in these other people to cut red tapes and obstacles proves and says the direct opposite of what those comments are made. And they created a timeline. And in, in his weekly report that he sent out after that day, he does, he made mention to all the shareholders, which I think there's around five hundred shareholders that this email goes out to in the city, that their permits still had not been approved. So at that point in time, I made a request from the city manager to get a timeline of when the permits were asked for. So on April the ninth of twenty twenty-four, Lucky City did apply for a building permit. On five fifteen, the applicant did not provide plans for the renovation until this date. So he applied for a permit, but they did not provide drawings and plans. And we're putting a full-blown kitchen in here, which would be required. So the inspector spoke with the contractor, conveyed their comments on the plans and what needed to be addressed. The owner had a third-party designer complete his plans, who was not affiliated with the contractor. So that went on. On the s- the second submission, on ten twenty-one of twenty-four, the contractor resubmitted for the renovation plans. However, the issues noted by the inspector in the first review was never corrected on October twenty-first, first of twenty-four. So issues with the plans were identified on the first of May of twenty-four and not corrected. So we'll, we'll move on. Then the contractor did not reach back out to the city regarding the plans, October twenty-fourth through February twenty-fifth. On three eighteen, the Rockethead County Inspector sent comments detailing the same issues with the plans noted by the regional inspection previously. So he had been asked, if I correct, count correctly, two or three times, to correct items in order to be able to get his permit. So his next step, the applicant has been made aware to resubmit the building plans for a third review by the county inspector's department to address the comments per the email from the chief building inspector. And there's only an approval. And their zoning approval was issued. The same thing with Dirty Laundry, they claimed that city staff was holding up their permits, when in fact, on 2/11, they submitted building plans for a commercial addition to the kitchen. That went through, it was required, it required a TRC review. That passed through. On 2/25, the applicant submitted site plans and will receive comments back after the TRC's 10-day review period. And what that was is when it first went through TRC, they had to make adjustment, adjustments, and, and then resubmit for commenting back in their plan review process. So on 3/11, staff sent comments from the TRC review to the applicant. At that night, Mr. Savis made accusations that city staff was holding his permits up. However, that was untrue because staff is waiting on him to make the corrected comments based off of his plan review from the TRC. So then on 3/14, the county inspector sent the applicant's comments to the building plans. They had several phone conversations before and after the, with the applicant in the county. On 3/18, a follow-up email was sent by the county inspections department, and the applicant is aware of his next steps. The applicant's been made aware to resubmit site plans to TRC for review. And once those reviews are done, they have 10 days to address them here. So the reason that I feel that this is important is we don't need people coming in here saying that the city is against growth or that the staff is against growth, when in fact, we have proved to do the direct opposite of that in the last six months, and staff has worked diligently. And if staff or council does not do correctly, then you guys should hold us accountable. However, if you come in here and you want to hold us accountable, it has to be held accountable with facts. And you cannot hold staff accountable if they're doing what's right, and you're not giving the full transparency of the story. So staff has done absolutely everything they could do to help push this forward, and I apologize to get long, but I feel that when you go spreading these things in the community, it's important because if we sit here silently, then the citizens think that what he says is true and that we're still down the same path of that we are not trying to promote growth. We worked diligently February the 20th and 21st for the social district. We did not want to rush a social district and pass something without getting feedback from the business community downtown that it affects. There's a committee who was working and going door-to-door and speaking individually with those business owners, but we did approve a map that lays that out and allowed city staff to figure out the operations of a social district, whether there are certain requirements that most people do, they have cups, stickers and all these things. How does this work and how do you keep it without getting out of control and use it as what we have seen in other communities, the way that it's been utilized in other communities, it has promoted growth. But we can't vote for something and then figure out how we're going to operate it, which is what that specific request has been from the city. And then we would be putting the cart before the horse, and we want to make sure that we get all these done correctly and we don't have a mess to clean up in the streets later on. Thank you.
Nelson Hurst.
Mayor and city council, we, on March 18th, I attended the special city council meeting. March the 25th, I attended the Human Relations Commission meeting. And then on March the 31st, the community meeting at Zion Baptist Church is my report.
Councilwoman Scoble.
Thank you, Mayor and city council and city manager. I will give you my report when I return with your permission. And please, I would like to thank Councilman Martin for his comments. Thank you.
Councilwoman Dejana.
I'll turn my report in later. I didn't attend much this, this month because of medical reasons, but I did attend a special city council meeting, call meeting, and I did have a chance to meet with a representative from Cone Health to discuss health care for Reedsville, and I'll pass that on.
I'll give a few items from my report. On 3/15, several city council members and myself, council member Coates, council member Martin, council member Scoble, we gave the key to the city to Ms. Elnora Neal. And the reason for that is because she has worked very hard, and she's been a trooper for the American Cancer Society. I think she raised pretty much close to $20,000 this last year. And on an average, she's raised 10-plus thousand dollars for the American Cancer Society. With all of the cuts that we're having now, that's going to be very important for a lot of families. On 3/15, Reedsville had an addition of a state championship to its trophy case. As a matter of fact, we had been in the state championship game, that was the third time in a row, and we had back-to-back state championships. On 3/16, Zion Baptist Church celebrated one of our own, Rochelle Tucker, for Women's History Month. On 3/20, I attended the first is pizza ribbon cutting. And that was really warm to my heart because that's a family business. Dad has retired, and now the sons are taking over. And they've got their children out there too, so there'll probably be another takeover sometime in the, not in the near future, but in the future. Also, had an opportunity to attend the Kiwanis Club Pancake Supper, where I cooked a few pancakes and mixed a few, a little pancake batter and told a few jokes, had a good time. And we got two people here who ate pancakes supper. I think those pancakes were pretty good. Also attended the ribbon cutting at Midtown Salon and Spa, and I mention that because this young lady has had three locations in Reedsville, so there's something special about Reedsville. In 21 years, in a few days now, she's been here. She's got a very progressive business, and she's got everything under the sun that you need there at Midtown. And I also attended the citywide revival at Elm Grove that was sponsored by the Ministerial Alliance of Reedsville. That ends a portion of my report that I'm going to give tonight, and we have Diane Chamber Chief.
Because when you wrap off tonight, it's called- Really quickly, we had a phenomenal county wine coffee this morning at the Economic Development Office and about Level Up RCO and the CTE Innovation High School. We are so excited about this, and I hope that you all be able to participate in some of the other events that this project is doing, but please mark your calendars for the InVision Expo that they will do in October. It is the coolest thing to see those 7th and 10th graders come out and have the opportunity to learn about the careers and the things that they can do right here in Rocketham County. All right, so really quickly, I'm going to run through, we've got our cash vows coming up on May 2nd. We do those every first Friday at noon, and we announce them the day before at coffee. We are very excited to announce the first annual She Means Business, Reedsville Women's Business and Industry Expo, which will be on May 22nd at the Pin House, and it is sponsored by Penn Transportation Corporation and our C.C. Small Business Center, and our very own Ms. Barbara and city manager Moore will be participating in that on our panels and in our session. So I think it's going to be a phenomenal day, and I'm looking forward to it. We have an After Hours at the Collective in Wentworth on May 29th, and we have our Reedsville Night at the Greensboro Gus Hoppers in partnership with Team Reedsville. Very excited about this. Tickets are on sale for 15. You've got to get your t-shirt sizes in by April 30th if you want a t-shirt for that. Ribbon cuttings, we have the Breakview Outpatient Center on Thursday. Grand opening starts at 2, but we'll cut the ribbon at 3 o'clock. We have the Community Baptist Middle School that built a new building there for the middle school, and that dedication and ribbon cutting is on the 15th at 9. Also believe we have confirmed Montana, May 8th at 4:00 PM, is that correct, for the quilt square ribbon cutting at Market Square? Okay, so I haven't been putting that on my rotation, so it's not on your paper yet, but we are doing that. And that is the opening to the farmer's market, correct? Okay.
So Farmer's Work starts maybe the 3rd of Saturday, 7:00. That'll be the first official-
Thursday.
-4:00 to 7:00.
Also, we'll cut the ribbon at 4, right? Okay, yeah, we're just finalizing that, but I wanted to go ahead and make sure that was on your radar. So really excited about that as well. We have several new members. Things are very exciting around the chamber here lately. So CPR Hub and More, Madison Dental, HHR LLC, Oak Hills Golf Club, All Creatures Incorporated, and Berklu. So those are our new members, and the next coffee in May will be at Henry CPR Safety and Solutions on 333B South Scale Street. So lots happening, kicking off the season. Excited to partner again with the city on the concert series and the beer gardens and kind of all the things. I think summer covered most of our other stuff that we're helping with, but any questions?
Thank you, Diane. You do a super job.
Thank you.
Okay, next, announcement of board and commission appointments.
One for consideration tonight, that was for the Reedsville Human Relations Commission, one of the student seats, Ms. Ashley Sosa was unanimously appointed.
We'll be moving to the first floor conference room for a closed session to consult with the attorney on several matters under attorney-client privilege and to discuss the economic development matter pursuant to NCGS 143-318 on 11A, 3, and 5. We won't be coming back out after closed session, so we do appreciate you all being here. Yes.
Council, we may have items to come back out.
Oh, okay. We will be coming back out. Okay, okay. All right. Need a motion to go into closed session.
I like the motion. Close session.
Second. No, 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 you got it, you got it. Okay, in discussion, and we will be returning. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Angela, do we need a motion to go on the board?
Well, we just slid out like the app when we were in there, so now-
All right.
So whatever motions, and then a motion to adjourn.
All right, we have two motions. Item one, motion to approve redundant waterway line that are outstanding as presented by Wright Waterway Consult LLC. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
I'll read this out.
Motion to approve redundant waterline, I make a motion to approve the redundant waterline even that are outstanding as presented by Wright Waterway Consult LLC.
Do we have a second? All right, second in discussion. Although, if you may. And number two, motion to approve engagement letter for legal services with Conne Buin and Schenk P LLC.
May I make a motion to approve engagement of legal services with Conne Buin and Schenk?
Do we have a second?
Second.
In discussion. Although, if you may raise your right hand. I know you all would like to stay here. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion to the jury?
Second.
Although, if you may raise your right hand.